Good evening, everybody. At this time, I'd like to resume the meeting and turn it over to Dr. Clark for the report of the superintendent.
Can everybody hear me? Yes? Okay, great. All right, welcome to the June Board Meeting. It's summer. We had a very, very successful school year. The graduations were amazing. We barely got the high school graduation in. We thought it was going to rain, but we got it in. And it was two very successful graduations. One thing I want to say, and something that I said at the high school graduation that is beyond impressive, is that this senior class earned nearly $1 million in scholarships for colleges and universities. And that is just very impressive. But not only that, on June 3rd, this senior class was also awarded over $300,000 in local scholarships. And we are so grateful for this amazing community for making that possible. So I wanted, in a public board meeting, to give them a round of applause because it's just very impressive and fantastic. And of course, our graduates are not off to college yet, at least not all of them. And so we want to wish them much success. And we want to invite them to come back and share with us all of their successes. And many of them do that, and we always look forward to having them here. I've been talking about spotlighting our graduates, and we're going to start a video series on that, very much like the Lacy Minute, starting in September. So we are looking forward to having our graduates come back and talk about their successes. Starting in September, our two new student representatives, Jake Serrano and Kylie Bragg, will be with us. So another congratulations to them. We're looking forward to working with them. One of the things that I haven't talked about, and it's available to all of you, is the superintendent's report. And so we spend a lot of time talking about our seniors of the month, and we have some special recognitions. But if you ever get a moment, every month, we put together this amazing report of all of the outstanding accomplishments of not just our seniors, and that's amazing as well, but all of the other accomplishments of our students. And if we talked about them at every single meeting, we'd be here for about four hours. And we wish that we could, because we have much to celebrate here in the Lacy Township School District. We're going to talk about a couple of them tonight. But I just, I wanted to encourage you to take a moment and read through the superintendent's report because it's very impressive. And with that, let's transition. During our award ceremonies, one of the groups that kept coming up, the groups that we were talking about, is this Ocean County Math League. And so we have a couple of presentations. I see trophies all throughout the room, and we're going to celebrate them tonight. So, is Mrs. Costa here? There she is. Mrs. Costa always sends me an email. She's always bragging about the Ocean County Math League. So we've invited her, with her trophy, to talk a little bit about what our students have accomplished. So thank you, Mrs. Costa.
Good evening, Dr. Clark and members of the Board of Education. My name is Merrill Costa, and I am the 4th grade advisor at the Lenoka Harbor School for the Ocean County Math League, and I am also on their executive board. This past April and May, students from 4th through 8th grade all over Ocean County, including our schools here in Lacy, participated in the Ocean County Math League contest. This is a challenging contest that consists of higher-order thinking and multiple-step problems that each student must solve to compete. Upon completion of the test, each school calculates their top five highest scores and forwards this team score to the Ocean County Math League Committee to determine the county winners. Overall, there are four top-team winners and five individual winners for each grade level. I am so proud to announce that Lacy Township School District continues its longstanding tradition and has again placed several winning teams in this event. On June 5th, the top five students on each of our winning teams, as well as our individual winners, receive trophies at the Ocean County Math League Award Ceremony in Stafford. Tonight, I have the privilege of presenting to you our winning teams. For the elementary level, 4th grade, 4th-place team, Lenoka Harbor School, Alexander Riley. And you guys can come on down in front. If you have your trophies, please bring them with you. Ella Barnes. And Hunter Dahl. And I had the honor of being their coach this year. In 2nd place, Cedar Creek Elementary School, Brody Cincella. Austin Vecchio. And Anthony Calabrese. And their coach, Kristy Pancary. And I'd also like to present our individual winner for the 4th grade, Rocco DeVino, a 5th-place winner. So he earned two trophies. Very nicely done. So he not only competes, the teams not only compete for their highest scores, but individually, each student can also get an individual award if they are the top five out of the entire county. So Rocco was the top five out of the entire county. Our next is the 5th grade, Milpond Elementary. 2nd place, Joey Schneider. Braden Gilinella. Rogan Resatar. Olivia Miller. And Michael Austin. And their coach, Sue Steinberg. And finally, our 8th grade team at the Lacy Middle School, won 3rd place. John Kim. Robert Eckert. Ryan Breen. Matthew McLeeny. And I would like to add our individual winner, in 2nd place, John Kim. I'd like to congratulate both the students and their awesome coaches on a job well done. I know I have said this before, but I will say it again. These great achievements do not happen by chance. It does indeed take a village. These awesome students that you see before you not only have the encouragement of their parents, but each and every one of them have been taught, mentored, and supported by an amazing group of talented and dedicated teachers who have made a difference in the lives of these students and who are here tonight to share in their success. So if there's anyone who has had any of these students here, you can stand up and acknowledge yourself. In the past, I've asked, I just have a request. It's very difficult to acknowledge these wonderful students simply because of timing. The Ocean County Math League Award Ceremony, I know for myself, takes place in the beginning of June, usually the first week. But our board meeting for June has always been the week after school lets out. We were very lucky last year that it just so happened with those snow days that we were in schools, so we were able to have most of the kids here. So I would like to request if we could possibly move the meeting up one week for the month of June, so that all the students who have earned such wonderful accolades could have their moment to shine. Thank you.
It's always a problem when you don't have enough hands for trophies. It's a good problem to have. Mrs. Costa, instead of snow days, I think we'd rather move the meeting up a week because I don't want to wish for snow days. It's a good suggestion. And I also want to acknowledge the fact that Mrs. Nemec is here, Milpond Principal, Mr. King is here, Milpond Principal, Mrs. Kelmurray. I see Mr. Brewer. We thank them. And I don't know, does anybody have any additional comments to make, or we're good? Okay. Well, a round of applause to all of you for helping. And I see Mrs. Rineska there, too, who is about to make another presentation for us. I've been talking about Mrs. Rineska's project, and I'm not going to steal her thunder, but she has outstanding news to share with us. So Mrs. Rineska, the microphone is yours.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Just another congratulations to all of our Ocean County Math winners. That's fantastic to see the children as they go up through the ranks. Thank you to Mrs. Costa for the presentation and for being part of the Ocean County Math League, which I just learned this evening. So I had no idea, so thank you. So next, I would like to recognize and make an exciting announcement about our Recycle Rally efforts. So the people most responsible for our success, besides our students and family, are the following people who I'd like for them to come down and join me in front of the podium. Joni Donahue, our supervisor, Marnie Zito, one of our lead teachers, and Mr. Mark Stevens, So without their teamwork, this project would never, ever be possible. So a little background for those of you who don't know what Recycle Rally is. It's a national competition run by PepsiCo. The first year, you have to qualify to be in it. You can't just sign up. And it's individual schools, it's not by district. So a school has to have somebody who's interested in taking on this work, and it's a lot. But you have to qualify to get in. The first year, you have to prove all of your routines to PepsiCo as being sustainable. They audit our records multiple times a year. They actually come out to the school and audit multiple times. They determine whether or not we can participate in the national competition, which includes approximately 100 schools nationwide. So what did we have to do? Students, parents, and community members were asked to collect specific plastics, number 1 and 2 specifically. A system also had to be put in place, and that included our 4th grade Cubby Club, basically all our 4th graders. That was put in place. They collected the bags of plastics from around the school's drop-off bins and delivered them to a designated waste station in the building back by Mr. Stevens. So the rally team, including the custodians, weighed each bag all year, each day, and records all the totals. All the charts are hanging in the back there. From there, we have to log in with the company daily. So Mrs. Zito or Mrs. Donahue have to get on the computer and log in daily our weights. Promoting the program's also a big part of it. So promoting the program, you have to have assemblies, you have to have contests, you have to form community partnerships. And we also created a 24/7 drop-off location station behind the school. So parents drop off weekends, family, you know, community members, anybody who wants to drop off 1 and 2s. This year, we collected and recycled over 100,000 pounds of plastic. So with all of those efforts in place, I'm so proud to say that we earned a check that we have with us here today. Cedar Creek won 3rd place in the nation, earning $40,000 for our school. So I want to say, congratulations to our team. These three people right here are basically the reason I approve everything, but they're doing the work. So basically, our team right here, we could not have done this without their collaboration, cooperation, collaboration with our parents, families, community. So we thank you very much, and Cedar Creek thanks you. And, you know, just wanted to share the good news and tell everybody what Recycle Rally's about, because it's not just about the money. I mean, it is, but it's not only about the money. We have valuable lessons that are in the classrooms. There's a lot of conversation in the classrooms about being environmentally friendly, what it means. The assemblies are very educational. They've put together PowerPoint presentations for the kids about recycling. So there's a lot of education that goes into it as well. So I just wanted to recognize the three people responsible and let everybody know what it's all about. So thank you.
May I ask a quick question? Can you win again next year?
Yeah.
Oh, you can.
Oh, yeah. This was actually, or, I don't need the microphone. This was actually our second year. We qualified in three years ago. Last year, we won $9,000. And this year, they really upped the ante, and we actually won 3rd. So, and we're competing against not just elementary schools, high schools, big schools. So we, you know, the 2nd-place team was what, a high school in Texas? And we couldn't catch them. They were so far. But then there was a lot of other, you know, schools, obviously, with 100-plus schools behind us. But it is a lot of work. You really need a lot of people on board to do it, but it's worth it, so.
And I'm just going to warn you, if you have a water bottle right now and it's not empty, hold on to it because they will take it.
I will take it. Every time I'm in the board office, I collect everybody's bottles and take them with me in my car.
Leave the bags of bottles at Cedar Creek like I did a few times.
Yeah, we're a little excessive. All right, thank you.
So now, Mrs. Rineska, we hope you'll come back and talk to us a little bit about what you're going to spend that money on, because we're very curious.
Well, we've discussed like four items at the moment, so once we have that finalized, I'll certainly share with you.
So we'll invite you back to share.
Sure.
Thank you, congratulations. All right, another presentation. I'd like to invite Principal Nemec to the podium to talk to us about an exciting project.
Good evening. Again, I just want to say congratulations to all the Ocean County Math League winners. You guys did great, and you represented Lacy really well, so we're really proud of you. I'm very excited to invite Quinn Waters down to the podium. So Quinn is going to do most of the talking tonight, but Quinn reached out to me a few months ago and presented a project that he's going to share this evening in regards to his Eagle Scout project. So if we could all give Quinn another round of applause and listen to what he has to say.
I would just like to present my Eagle Scout project to you. So the project that I've planned is to build a bridge at the Milpond Elementary School across the drainage area between the school and the recess field, so that the children can get across to that recess field without getting their feet muddy. And I remember, it's always been a problem when I went to the school, and Mrs. Nemec was excited for the project when I presented it to her. This project is also handy for handicapped children with wheelchairs or walkers. It makes it easier for them to get across this area. I know of one student that was unable to get to the recess field because he wasn't able to get up the hill because of his walker. So this will make it possible for him to get to the, for him and other students to get to the recess field. I plan to make the project ADA combined, which is the Association for, it's the Disabled Disability Act. So that would just make it so that children with disabilities are able to get to the recess field following this act and make it so that it's able for them to get over and use the bridge. I have copies of my proposal, if you would like to see them. I have four copies, but I can pass them now.
So I can just share that we're very excited for this project, and we can't wait to see what comes of it. So thank you again, Quinn.
Do you have any questions for me about the project?
Actually, I have a question. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. DeBlass. Do you have a question?
Sorry. Yeah, you're awesome, man, really.
Thank you.
You should be so proud, and so should your parents. These costs right here, you need to raise this, or they're already raised?
The costs are approximate, and the people associated with the Boy Scouts that I've talked to so far said that I should not have to raise costs because I'm contacting places that are willing to give donations for materials.
I'll give you $500 for this, like, tomorrow. This is like dear to my heart because I'm special needs. I mean, I could get everywhere I need to get, but like my ADHD is like really, really bad. So what you're doing is pretty awesome, you know, so.
Thank you.
They don't make them like you, man. You're a good kid.
Thank you.
So Quinn, I want to commend you, and I'm going to piggyback on what Mr. DeBlass said, that it's a great idea. So just out of curiosity, how did you come up with the idea?
A teacher at the school has always like known that it's been a problem and told me that it would be a good idea to do the project. So basically, that was the idea that I got, and then I just basically came up with all the planning and everything for it, the design that's in the packet there. I made that at the high school with the help of Mr. Sotero. It's a CAD drawing. And that, in that design, it's about 12 feet, but the range can change. It's very, whatever needs to be done with materials and the size of it.
When you're rich one day, I want my $500 back.
So let me say this. The idea is fantastic, but this is very impressive, so.
Thank you.
Outstanding. We're really looking forward to it. You'll let us know, we can come take some pictures?
Definitely.
Okay, all right. Congratulations.
Thank you. Any other questions for me?
I think we're good. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Great job.
All right. And then the only other, a few more comments that I wanted to make is every month, I talk about the artists of our board covers, our superintendent's cover, but this month, we're featuring all of our outstanding athletics and all of the great competitions that took place. So congratulations to all of our athletes, and we're looking forward to another great season for the new school year. Finally, enjoy the summer, students. Not just the ones that are here, but those that hopefully might watch. Don't forget your summer reading. All the information that you need for summer reading is on our website. So enjoy your first couple of days of summer, but don't forget to get that done. And I'd now like to turn it over to Mr. DeGeorge. Thank you, Mr. Giordano.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. Good evening, everyone. For those who were not with us at the top of our meeting at the 6 o'clock hour, I explained a bit about the process for filling the vacancy on the Board of Education. In that comment, I mentioned that the Board's advertisement for the position closed on July 5th. So, June 5th, yeah. Is it the end of the school year yet? Yes. So June 5th. And the Board has had the opportunity to spend the time in between then and now reviewing the resumes and letters of interest. And we were a little bit late coming out of private session this evening because there is a good amount of discussion, because everyone agrees that each of the candidates presents a very strong set of skills and qualifications. So after some deliberation, the Board now, Mr. Giordano is Board President, is going to call for any candidates to be nominated to the seat after the nominations are concluded and closed. Then we'll proceed with a roll-call vote if, in fact, a nominee is put forth. Mr. Giordano?
Okay, thank you, Mr. DeGeorge. At this time, I'd like to call for a nomination and appointment of the new board member.
It's a nomination for Mr. Harold W. Peters Jr.
Thank you.
Second?
Second? Tom did?
Did you, Tom? Did you second?
I will second.
Are there any other nominations at this time? Seeing none, I ask to close nominations. Make a motion, please.
Close nominations.
Okay, we'll proceed then with roll-call vote to appoint Mr. Harold W. Peters Jr. to fill the vacancy on the Board of Education. Mrs. D'Anta?
Yes.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBlass?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Peters. I ask you to step down to the podium, please.
I, Harold William Peters Jr., solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And that I will bear truth face and allegiance to the same, to the governments established in the United States and this state. Under the authority of the people, so help me God, I, Harold William Peters Jr., solemnly affirm that I possess the qualification prescribed by law for the office member of the Board of Education, and that I will faithfully and partially and justly perform all duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Again, congratulations, Mr. Peters, and congratulations to all the candidates. It's a very spirited discussion, very impressive pool of candidates. So congratulations to all for being willing to step forward and put your name in contention. Mr. Peters, at the end of this meeting, you and I will meet to discuss some very important topics for a new board member, not the least of which is discussion about the Code of Ethics, by which all school board members are to abide. We'll talk about some training that you need to undergo. We'll talk about the required criminal history review and fingerprinting process, which you are obligated within 30 days to complete. A conflict of interest questionnaire. We'll talk about the schedule and construct of meetings, and any other questions that you would like to discuss right at the conclusion of this meeting. Also, in preparing for this meeting, I did personally ask each of the candidates to carefully review the agenda for this evening as it was posted this morning. And in preparation for this meeting, in the event that he, in this case, was appointed so that by statute and by New Jersey School Board Association rules and regulations, Mr. Peters is able to, if he so chooses, to vote on any resolution put forth on this evening's agenda. And that's pretty much all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. DeGeorge. At this time, I'd At this time, I'd like to open this floor to public comment.
Yes.
Not sure this is the proper time, but good evening. I'd like to thank everybody in the board tonight for coming. Congratulations, Mr. Peters. I'm here to discuss something that was quite remarkable, your heading of your board meeting minutes today, Lacey Athletics.
Sir, can you just please state your name and address?
Sure, absolutely. Charles Waters, 604 Franklin Court, Forkett River. I'm here to talk about Lacey Athletics, specifically here representing the Lacey High School Junior Varsity Ice Hockey Team. Team members. Team members and parents, we have recently been informed that JV Ice Hockey Team has been cut by the Athletics Department. Tonight here, we are here to see what can be done to keep this program. I have the following comments and then some wrap-up questions for the board, if you can answer them, please. My first comments are about if it was cut, the team was cut because of financial reasons. I don't know why, if it was cut because of financial reasons, why the boosters were not contacted. The boosters are created to assist the program, the sport programs, and could possibly bridge any gap that was seen, or tend still possibly breach a gap that was seen by the shortage of funds. If it was a financial determination, then why would other programs not have additional cutsbacks, cutbacks in coaching instead of a cutting of an entire program, JV program? And I'm not singling out any one sport, but for example, the football coaching stipends total approximately $72,000, against that's only for coaching, one head coach and eight assistant coaches. In my opinion, seems a little bit excessive. Last time I checked, we are not the Crimson Tide of Alabama. The $72,000 does not include any associated league fees or equipment fees, so those are on top of the $72,000 that I'm listing here. Just to put this into perspective, the 2018-2019 season, the JV Ice Hockey Team program cost this school $3,200 in fees to the Jersey Shore Arena League, plus the coaching stipends of approximately $13,000, which includes only one head coach and one assistant coach, with a total cost of approximately $16,213. Needless to say, we know which program was cut out of the budget. Additional items to consider are the additional hidden costs. The school district has additional costs for other sports, across associated field maintenance, bleacher maintenance, press box maintenance, concession stand maintenance, court maintenance, basketball nets, backboards, soccer nets, posts, volleyball nets, posts, and drilling of volleyball nets, which we all know are very expensive. The Board also has responsibility for paying for electric for gyms, field houses, press boxes, and concession stands. Ice hockey does not have any of these additional costs. It's all into the $3,200. The school district provides the other contact sports, football and men's lacrosse, with safety equipment necessary to play. The ice hockey program is not as fortunate. The players of this team have to supply their own sticks and helmets, pants, skates, and etc. so that they can play, they only get a uniform. These players have an invested financial interest in the program continuing. It's hard to say that the reason for cutting the JV program would be a financial reason, it's clearly not the most expensive sport. Another option if it was cut was because of player turnout. Player turnout is the reason for cutting the program. I wonder how the school determined that the enrollment numbers, what they would be reached at, I mean, signups not till fall. We did a little bit of outreach research with the local hockey leagues in Brick Township, Toms River, and the Jersey Shore Arena where most of these children go play ice hockey before they get to the high school level. Based upon that research, the 2020 season would bring in three additional players to the team, and '21, eight additional players, and '22, five additional players, and '23, another five additional players, and '24, six additional players, and 2025, eight additional players. So the numbers are continuing to build in the interest of the sport. In addition, to these future players, we've been informed that a player from another school district has interest in playing for the Lacey Hockey Team. They have since contacted the school to see what the process is and pursuing that interest. To cancel or skip a year of JV hockey because of low turnout would be counterproductive in developing a successful program. It would be like teaching jiu-jitsu to only 10th degree red belts, alright? You lose your momentum. So I don't see how player turnout could really be an issue. We all believe and are for the student-first thought process, that we're all here to do and support for the students, alright, whatever we can. Some of these students only participate in a single sport, cutting this program would be, cutting this program would be a disservice to them and possibly considered discrimination against those students. Think about the benefits of sports for adolescents. Many athletes perform better academically, sports teach problem-solving skills and team building, sports tend to boost self-esteem. Participating in sport can reduce stress and be an outlet of pressure for high school students. These students have developed a kinship to one another, they respect one another both on and off the ice. By cutting this program, we would be stuffing out this development and growth in some of these students' athletic abilities. Sports can change a student's life. The varsity program is not born, it is built. For the varsity ice hockey to improve, we need a JV program that will be used as a building block to hone the skill sets, promote team building, and the growth that would be necessary to enable the varsity team to be worthy of a tradition of pride and a tradition of excellence. So the following was our questions that we are posing to the Board. It's our understanding that no other JV teams have been cut. If this is in fact the fact, it would seem that the ice hockey JV team program, again, is being discriminated against. Can any board member tell us why the JV Ice Hockey Team was cut? Can the boosters assist in covering a shortfall funding if they so have the monies?
So, Mr. Waters, let me just start out by saying you've made some very valid points. All, I've taken lots of notes. Obviously, it's not something that we can discuss right here, but we will go back and take a look at some of the points that you did make and address some of the questions that you have and we'll get back to you.
I knew that was going to be the answer, so can we request that a meeting be set up with yourself, Dr. Clark, with Principal Brandis, and with Athletic Director Del Vento Evans, and also Head Coach D'Amico? Do you know when we could possibly schedule something?
Well, I will reach out to them tomorrow. I don't know what their summer schedules are, but I will reach out to them and I will, before you leave, get your phone number and get in touch.
That's fabulous. I thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. I came here tonight because my daughter was Student of the Month at the middle school and I wanted to get a copy of the minutes, but then I saw page 5, number 6, and I just had a few questions because I'm seeing a pattern as a taxpayer and I just wanted to get some clarification. So I know in 2016-2017 year, we had a $500,000 surplus that went to capital reserve and we cut our health aides. In 2017-2018, we had a million dollars in surplus, we put it in capital reserve and we cut our cafeteria staff. In 2018-2019, going into negotiations with the contracts for teachers and staff, we had a $2 million surplus that got put into capital reserve. And now, on this page, it looks like three and a half million this year is in surplus, getting moved to capital reserve where it can't be put to support any of these cuts that's happening with athletics, all of our paras, the coaches, some of the teachers' positions that have been cut. So if we're having these surpluses increase every year, but we're cutting people and programs every year, I was just wondering if I could get some education on that, how come that's happening?
Right. Good question, thank you for your question. There's a very important distinction between a reserve account, which is a balance sheet issue versus profit and loss, they're not exactly the same. So the first step in the process is when all of the dust settles, and remember, you're looking at a $75 million budget, right?
Right.
So at the end of the year, we and the auditors determine if there is any excess of actual revenue, right, actual revenue received versus actual expenses. That's, sometimes there is more revenue than there is expenses, sometimes it works out the other way. Whatever the answer is, that number, more or less, gets added to the district's balance sheet, the equity. It is in no way even close to $3 million. So what happens is probably going to be, I would say, far less than $1 million on a $75 million budget. That's really not a lot of money, and it's not something you know until the dust settles after June 30th. Does that make sense? Like, that's not something you can know.
But wasn't that the cost of our paras?
You could, it's a kind of similar number, sort of, but it has nothing to do with it because there's no way we will know what that number is for sure until the audit is done, and that's not really going to be till December. So it's not money that we have to spend, right? So after that number gets calculated, whatever it is, the excess of revenue or the excess of expenditures, that fund balance result, resulting fund balance gets capitulated, gets put in different categories. That is where the Board has re-categorized itself, reinvented the balance sheet in a certain way, re-categorized in such a way that it allowed the district to do these health and safety-related projects that it couldn't do any other way. But it's not because we have $3 million extra that we always knew about, or any kind of extra that we already always knew about.
But don't we have the option to put it back into the operating budget?
You really don't until the fund balance is capitulated. I won't know that. We won't know that until November, December.
But once it's put into capital reserve, it's locked in there and can only be used for building maintenance?
Yes, the building capital projects. Yes, yes, like the security vestibules, like.
Gym floors, boilers.
Yeah, gym floors, boilers. We have probably $30 million worth of health and safety-related products which we need to undertake, and we're trying our best to avoid referendum, so we're trying to recapitalize ourselves in such a way that it doesn't put a strain on the budget, that it doesn't put a strain on taxpayers, where we don't, we don't have to, where we can't. This year, we were prohibited from increasing taxes any further. So it's not the same, it's not like saying, gee, we have $3 million left over that we could have used for another purpose. That has not yet been determined, and I can tell you that that's not the way it works, you know? We create a budget from scratch every single year, very carefully, with the whole team involved and the Board's input as well, and we try to determine the maximum amount of revenue we can get and try to reduce expenditures to the extent we can. We don't know. You've heard us talk many times. When the budget gets created, things change, and sometimes things change for the better, sometimes they don't. We had a loss of $680,000 worth of state aid in this school year we didn't anticipate, so hard choices had to be made and things that we wanted to spend, plan to spend money and we couldn't. So you just never really know.
That's how I was looking at it. If we had not put that $2 million last year into capital reserve, that $680,000 cut might not have hurt so much?
Doesn't work.
Doesn't work that way?
That way, no.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate your answers.
Yeah, sure, no worries. If anybody would like to leave now, please, you don't have to, but if you want to, now's a good time to do it.
First thing I'd like to comment on, I went to project graduation and your senior class who earned all that money, who did so well financially, also did very well in becoming adults. We had a little bit of a problem, which was not their problem, a transformer blew outside of I Play America on Route, I think it might have been on Route 9, it could have been on 18, I think is the other road. Anyway, the lights went out. First off, we went in and there was a flicker, and everybody kind of left. And about 15 minutes later, there was a flicker and somebody said, gee, wouldn't it be something if the lights went out? And then the lights went out. And I Play America doesn't have windows. They have generators, which they couldn't get going. Eventually, they did, but you know, a thing like that in an emergency is, takes a little time for things to get going. We had 135 current graduates who now couldn't use the rides, couldn't use the games, and it was all the ingredients of a disaster and they were just wonderful. We gathered them, they got gathered together, they did the prizes, they used flash, the cellphones for lights, there was no, none of the things you'd expect. There was no shouting, there was no running, there was nothing. There was just total cooperation. And then when the lights came back on, I Play America kind of stepped up and gave them extra credit on the game cards, so on and so forth. But I just wanted to comment that that graduating class really deserves some kudos for their behavior in what could have been a pretty, it could have been a disaster, but they didn't let it become. They really stepped up. And that being said, item 55 in tonight's budget, engineer of record, is there a project in the works? You're hiring an engineer for some reason?
Great question. Every year, the Board, and I'll explain this a little bit before the votes are taken on the action items, every year, the Board, from a business perspective, every June or so, needs to reorganize itself, to prepare itself for the next coming year. So in part of that is to appoint what we call professional services. So we appoint an auditor, we appoint a few attorneys who have different specialties, we appoint OT, PT, speech, we appoint an architect, and we appoint an engineer. It is not to say that we will use necessarily the engineer, but if we had what's called a mechanical, electrical, or plumbing type of project, such as a boiler maybe, they would have an opportunity to talk to us about it, what that would look like. Does that make sense?
So you're just appointing your engineer?
We are.
Standard operating procedure, planning board does the same thing, Board of Adjustment and Township?
Yes.
So there's no, it's not for any specific?
It's not for a specific project. However, that said, if you heard our budget presentation of last month, we did say that we need to have this high school track replaced for safety reasons and that there was we need to have this high school track replaced for safety reasons, and that there was a final boiler project at the Mill Pond School that we are gonna undertake.
Right. All of those things do need an engineer.
Yes.
I understand that. Okay. I also had the question about item six with the $3 million, and it, I guess it might get a little bit confusing to those of us who only see the short version in the agenda, but if at the end of the year, when you do go through your budget audit each year, the money that then is your excess that you find in December can't be applied to the next budget?
Yes. It's a, surplus is a very, a word we need to use very guardedly, and I'll explain why. So, there is an excess of, as I said to Ms. Mendez, an excess perhaps one way or the other. It's very rare that actual expenditures equal to the penny, actual revenue. But, that said, whatever side is excessive, there's more revenue or there's more expenditures, that gets applied to the current fund balance. Fund balance that was in place at June 30th of 2018, right, our equity, the district's equity. So, once we determine what the excess is, then it has to get capitulated or put into different categories. The district is allowed, permitted to keep in its legal reserve, that's what the term is called, up to additional 2% of its expenditures, right? Anything above that, there is a possibility that we would call, create something called excess surplus. We had a couple of hundred thousand dollars' worth of it that we used in the 18, 19 budget from the 16, 17 school year. So, if excess surplus is created, if it exists, that money would then be applied not to the 19, 20 budget, but by law, to the very next available budget build, which would be 2020, 2021. Does that make sense?
Right, which means that the 2019, 2020 budget would be eligible, or money from 2017, 2018, that might've been excess, would be available now to go into the current budget.
And it's already in there?
It is there.
Yes, sir.
That's the question?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep, it's already accounted for.
Right. So, in other words, the question, the answer to the question that was asked was, that's what we're doing. We are moving it forward.
Absolutely moving it forward, yes.
Thank you.
That's the law.
Fasten your seatbelt. What's the status of our lawsuit? Are we still in, in process of our lawsuit against the New Jersey State Board of Ed for the $4 million that we're not gonna have for the next couple of years to support all these programs?
You're talking about the lawsuit on S2?
Yeah.
It's in progress.
It's still in progress. We have no results at this time.
We do not.
Okay, and we're still down over 500 million, over $500,000 from our last year's budget, or this upcoming budget that we had planned for that S2 took away from us, right? It was 586,000, I believe? Is that, that correct?
Beginning of this year.
Okay. So, we're anticipating a loss of $4 million over the next four years. Has that changed at all, that number? No. And if we don't get, we don't win that lawsuit with Brick and whoever else, Tom's River and whoever else we're in bed with to try to recoup that money, then we have to somehow make up the difference of $4 million in our budget that we don't have to spend. And that is the problem that we're having with all these things that everybody wants. So, in facing reality, in business, you come up short, you do a lot of different things. Like I said, fasten your seatbelt. One of the biggest things you do is you liquidate assets. Now, has our enrollment total changed over the past five years?
It's gone down.
Gone down, right? So, we have less students. So, cost per head, running around, I know we're running somewhere around 15, 15 grand a kid, which is just a little under the state average, okay? So, if reducing enrollment by 15 grand a kid per year, then our costs should go down, but we have boilers and other things that we need to do in way of infrastructure. We tried, we tried doing the pay for transportation. If you live less than two miles from the school, then we still have that in the works, right? We eliminated that, so busing is free, even though the state doesn't require it, we're providing that service. There's been a lot of different things that this board and previous board has tried to make up this money. Every year, we go to the cap, 2%, every year, right? That's what the budget is. Whether we want more or not, we can only go to 2%, and every year, it's 2%. And the tax dollars for educational purposes, 66% of your taxes go to this district to support education. So, you know, it's a rock and hard place that this board is in, along with other boards, okay, who have tried to do the right thing over the course of years. And you know, I've been here for years, and I've been talking about it. But you can't do everything, and now, they pull the rug out from under you for trying to do the right thing. That's the way I look at it. Lakewood's getting, what, 15 million more?
30.
30 million more. Okay. But we're losing 4 million, because you tried to do the right thing and support as many programs as you could. You can't support all the programs anymore, folks. You can't support the programs and fix the boilers. You gotta do the infrastructure. You gotta keep the lights on. You gotta keep the classrooms open. I have a question, a couple of questions. One of them is number 21, alternative method of compliance for toilets in some of our schools. What does that mean?
For kindergarten.
It's kindergarten? It's not special ed?
Not necessarily, no.
Okay.
So, the code?
Yeah.
The code says that for kindergarten, unless they prefer to have a toilet in the classroom. In the event that there is not a toilet available in the classroom, we apply for a waiver, which we've been doing pretty much every year, to use an alternate toilet, which is outside the classroom but right across the hall. And that's what we do.
Okay, so this is not a new thing?
Oh, no.
Okay, but you're saying it tonight in here, and you have to do it every year, and you have to make the request from?
Oh, yes, yeah.
The county, the county superintendent?
As a district, we have been doing it for a long time, yep.
All right. Are you still considering play for pay for all sports? All sports and extracurriculars? Is that still on the table, being considered? Play to pay?
For right now? It is not.
It's off the table.
However, for right now, it is. However, that doesn't mean that when we get to our budget build for next year, we're gonna have to look to see where our increases are for costs. We certainly have to look at special education costs, and if that's something that we have to bring back to the table, then we will.
Okay, because, again, special education costs are mandated by the state as part of fair and efficient, a fair and efficient education. You must do it to comply with the law. Sports, you do not, all other extracurriculars are not part of fair and efficient. It's extracurricular, okay? So, that people understand that. I'm not saying they gotta be cut now, but if you don't have any other alternative, then they go. Class sizes increase. If you wanna play a sport, you pay. This is not unusual in the state of New Jersey, there's many districts that do it. You wanna play, you pay. As a matter of fact, in the town that I came from, they increased not only pay to play, this was, you know, but they're charging over $100 for each student just to park in the parking lot, okay? And it's a lottery system. So, if you're lucky enough, if you're lucky enough to get chosen in the lottery where you can come and park your car, it's gonna cost you $100 a year. So, something else to consider. Also part of pay to play, and by the way, you know, the hockey supporter was absolutely right in everything he said. One of the things he left out for all sports is referee fees, okay? There are other costs that weren't mentioned, such as referee fees and association fees and liability insurance, you know? All of that stuff does come into play. Pay to play, back to that. Have you considered the drug testing as part of pay to play? In other words, you wanna play a sport, you wanna park your car, you wanna be in drama club, you have, random drug testing comes up, if you're picked, you pay. Put it back on the student rather than on the board, as, again, part of pay to play. Something else to consider. Back to my original, well, not quite the original yet. By the way, in section C, it shows between athletics and co-curricular activities, over $290,000 in stipends per year, which is not cheap. Stipends going out over and above teacher's salaries, the stipends are paid. Back to the original, liquidation of assets. Dr. Clark in Forkett River Elementary School, there's currently 395 students?
Off the top of my head, I don't have that right.
It's in, it's in your superintendent's report.
If that's the number that's in there, then yes, that's the number.
Do you know if that's going up or down?
Well, we're currently waiting for our kindergarten number, so this time last year, our kindergarten enrollment spiked. We had an extra, or unanticipated, I should say, 50 students, so in late August, we had to hire two kindergarten teachers.
Okay.
We don't know, because we don't get those figures probably until late July, early August.
Okay, but the 50 extra students from the low-cost housing that the township approved, has that number changed from the 50, or it's going up, down?
Actually, that's a good question. We anticipated that our enrollment was going to increase tremendously, and what we found is that a lot of the families that moved into those homes were already our families.
Yeah, they were Sandy victims.
We didn't see the increased enrollment that we expected.
All right, so the kids were already in our district, and now?
Not in all such cases, but in many instances, yes.
Okay. How many of our elementary schools are maxed out to capacity? Any of them?
Using the word maxed out is?
In other words, the class sizes are maxed out, and if we want?
We still have room for it.
We still have room. Do we have room for 395 students?
In fact, let me say this, we recently just made a move in transportation to rework where the line was, which effectively changed the whole school from Cedar Creek to Forkett River. And that was to create balance in our schools. However, it only affects incoming families in kindergarten who don't already have siblings. So, if you're a brand-new kindergarten family, and you don't have siblings in that school, and that line affected you, then you will be going to the Forkett River School. So, that's one thing that we do, one measure that we take to create balance. But to say that our schools are maxed out, I'm not gonna say that. Are some schools a little bit more crowded than others in terms of when we need a small space, say for OT, occupational therapy, physical therapy, when we have to work with our special ed students to create small class sizes, sometimes that becomes an issue. But to say that we're maxed out, I'm gonna say that we're not.
Okay, so we're nowhere, basically, we're nowhere near where we need to go to, like other districts in the state, need to go to trailers.
Absolutely not.
Okay, so we're nowhere near that. And our enrollments have been going down, so our school sizes are okay at this point. Liquidation of assets, you know, $4 million. And if S2 gets any worse somewhere down the road, I'm not saying now, but throwing it out there for the future, which you know I always do, like five-year program, way in advance, sell it. Sell the school on Lacy Road. Put the kids in the other schools. Reduce the payroll, okay? Get the money while the property's hot. It's a hot commodity.
Much easier said than done, Mr. Rizzoli. Much easier said than done.
Okay. I'll be back, as you know. Thank you.
Is there any more public comment? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the floor to public comment. At this time, I'd like to open up board member comment and the committee reports. So, I'll start with Mr. Riggs and policy, and your comments, please.
Okay, so, policy meeting this month was pretty much nothing. We almost talked about a policy, and then we didn't talk about a policy. So, 0155 came up, which has nothing to do with student achievement, it's more of a self-regulating policy for us, the board members. We talked about some stuff, and we're gonna go back in and talk about it next month. So, unfortunately, we have nothing to talk about in far as policy goes. Congratulations to all the math league winners, the teams and the individuals, that's always impressive. Year after year, everybody getting up here with all their trophies. Way to go, everybody. Our Quinn Waters, the Eagle Scout Project, very cool. I guess it's been a problem going on for a long time, so glad you're working on that. Good luck with it, and whatever you need from, you know, if you need help from us or anything like that, I think some of us can swing hammers and do that sort of thing, too. So, we'll jump in with you. This one is the recycle rally, Ms. Rinduska's recycle rally. Congratulations to the Cedar Creek School on third place and $40,000. My kid'll never watch this, this isn't the sort of programming that I let him watch in the house, but I wanna congratulate him. He brought in a bag on that bus every day, and, you know, I thought he was gonna lose interest in it, you know, a month in, two months in, but at the end of the year, he was still carrying that little plastic bag of, you know, a milk jug, or, you know, one, one something, whatever it was. So, it's real neat that they made it that far. I think last year, they got like fifth place or something, right? It was fifth or fourth, and they're moving up?
Third or fourth.
Was it fourth? So, third place, so we got somewhere to go. Keep on, keep on raising the bar on that one and go for second next year. And lastly, all four of our candidates for stepping forward. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Jerry, for coming out. Gavin, I know he left already, and Greg, and congratulations on the win. Really, thanks, everybody. I know there was only four, four guys that stepped forward. You know, we got an election coming up, but it's not easy what they did, you know? I mean, they put it out there and they tried for it. So, again, in November, I guess we'll probably be seeing everybody again in November, and good luck down the road. So, that was all I really had tonight. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Riggs?
Thank you.
Mrs. Downing?
Okay, first, I'll report the curriculum committee, then on June 5th, present, myself, this is DeSantis, Mr. Riggs, studying for Giordano for the night, Dr. Clark, and, again, Mr. Decker. It was not a real long meeting, but we covered a lot of material. First, we approved purchasing, it's for implementation of Words Their Way, it's a literacy program. Mr. Decker led the discussion and explained the program to us, it's a phonics program for page one. I know we use that in a school that I'm presently working in, and it's a very good program, so I'm glad to see we brought that on to Lacy. We discussed the comprehensive equity plan, the committee reviewed, completed a copy of the district's three-year comprehensive equity plan, and it will be submitted to the county office once it's approved by the Board of Education. School goals were discussed by Dr. Clark and Mr. Decker. They reviewed the 2019, 2020 school goals, and discussed how they would be linked to the board and superintendent goals. And we are having a retreat, I believe, this Saturday, where we will be discussing these goals as well. We also dis- We also discussed the RTI two-years plan and intervention and referral services, two-year plan. Mr. Decker reviewed the plans. We're working hard on revising and tweaking the programs that we have in place to make it more effective. And then we reviewed the ALIS district training video. ALIS stands for?
Lockdown, inform, counter, evacuate.
Okay, and this video will be shown to our upper grades, the students. Very, very good video, and I want to thank Mr. Merman for putting that together. Very good job. Let's see, what else? And that was it for curriculum. On my notes, I'd like to congratulate our graduates, both in the middle school and the high school. And talking about Mr. Scanlon, the behavior at Project Graduation. Out of all the years I sat through high school graduation, I've never seen such a subdued and well-behaved, respectful group of students during graduation. It was wonderful. So it doesn't surprise me that that happened at Project Graduation. Mrs. Costa with the math league, I want to congratulate all the students. A little disappointed there's only one girl in that whole line, but we'll work on that for next year. Great, that math league is very challenging around the county, you know, they're taking it very seriously, so good job. Also, the recycling rally, Cedar Creek, forty thousand dollars, national competition. Just think about it, plastic, you know, how much does plastic wet? And they were able to get that or all that plastic up and come to Cedar Creek. Wonderful, good job. Quinn, congratulations on being, working on your Eagle Scout project. Congratulations, you get seventy dollars from the class. I think that's great. And true, if you need anything from the board, we're here to help you. It's a great project, a needed project, so good luck with it.
Thank you.
And that's lovely, so I want to congratulate the four candidates that came out tonight. I really was looking at all four of you up at that podium. It was a little intimidating, I'm sure, to stand in front of everybody, but all four of them did an excellent job. It was very difficult to choose the one, Mr. Peters. I wanted to congratulate you and good luck. And that is it. I just want to wish all the graduates, you know, good luck, whatever they plan on doing, college, military, or workforce, I want to wish them a lot of good luck and everyone have a safe and fun summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Downing. Ms. DeSensa, finance committee notes?
Yes, we had a very busy finance committee meeting, and that is because we have several projects underway. These projects are all underway through our capital reserve funds. Without those capital reserve funds, as Mr. DeGeorge mentioned, it might be necessary for a referendum. Everyone has to remember, it's thirty-five, forty years that this district is in existence, and we are replacing some very original old stuff like the boilers. So the security vestibule project is underway. That is a construction project in all six schools. The drawings were submitted and reviewed and is going to be underway, I believe, starting this week, Mr. DeGeorge?
Two days.
Two days, okay? The Mill Pond gym floor replacement project is a two-part project. One is the rip-up and the second part will be the installation. And the third big project we have underway is the Mill Pond boiler replacement. And the bids are due last week and this project is being awarded tonight and it will be underway shortly. Okay, wait, it's four projects. The security vestibules, the gym floor, the boiler replacement, and the fourth project is the high school track. That is a very, very big project and that is supposed to be underway by the end of this month. We did discuss the state aid litigation that Mr. Rissoli just asked about, and I had led a brief discussion regarding inviting the Associate Executive Director of the New Jersey Senate Democratic Majority Office, Mr. Mark Maguire, to a future board meeting to discuss S2 and the funding cuts, and I believe that invitation is going out to him shortly. We also had a discussion regarding the process to close and reconcile the books and records for the 2018-2019 school year and the projection of the year-end fund balance. We also discussed all the reorganization agenda items that are on tonight's agenda. Food services, we had to discuss increasing the price of our lunches for the nineteen-twenty school year. And as was previously mentioned, Dr. Clark showed an ALIS training video for the middle and high school students, which was produced in district. It was very professionally done by Mr. Merman's video class. We also got updated regarding a new STMS program for doing our bus routes because our old system is antiquated and we have to schedule our committee meetings for the summer months. That was also discussed. And I think that's the end of the finance committee report. And now you want my comments?
It all depends on how quick you can be.
I'll talk fast.
Alright, go ahead.
This was a really busy month, and I'd like to congratulate all those math league winners. In 2017, I had the privilege of attending the county awards ceremony when two dozen awards were given to Lacy students. I'll never forget it. And that was a great job by Cedar Creek, winning forty thousand dollars for recycling plastic bottles. That was one big check they got. And thank you also to our four board applicants and congratulations to Mr. Peters. Tuesday, May 21st, I returned from an Ocean County School Board meeting in Lakewood and I went to the high school and caught the last half of the band and chorus concert. Bravo to all, it was great. It's moments like these that make board member service worthwhile. To see the faces on the students and the proud parents as their children perform on stage, it's priceless. Sincerest thanks to all of our teachers and the music teachers that bring these events to fruition. On Wednesday, May 22nd, the Lenoka Harbor School held their band concert. There was amazing progress for this age group. Thursday, May 23rd, I was at the township committee meeting and I'm very sorry I had to miss the middle school science night and the Forkett River Band Concert, but with so many conflicts, I got to choose something. Friday morning, May 24th, at 10:00 a.m., I went to Ocean County College to be in the crowd and watch our Lacy cohort accept their associate's degrees. They were first. Out of five-hundred-and-twenty-five students in the crowd, the Lacy OCC Academy students were given their diplomas first. The Lacy parents in the audience were obvious as they cheered these students. It was truly a beautiful morning and congratulations to all the graduates of the OCC Academy. Monday, May 27th, Lacy had their Memorial Day Parade. The Lacy High School Marching Band played God Bless America along the parade route without any written music. These dedicated students march and play by memory. What an amazing group. Forty-six students were present for the parade this year. Thank you to all who make the marching band possible, the parents, the students, and the staff. At 11:00 a.m., there was a memorial ceremony at the Centennial Park next to the municipal building. The SGA laid a wreath and at the conclusion, students played taps. Tuesday, May 28th, was the high school awards ceremony. Congratulations to all who worked so hard to earn the various awards. Wednesday night, the 29th, was Mill Pond Steam Night, and then at 6:00 p.m., we had a special meeting for just one agenda item. Thursday, May 30th, was Mare Night in all three elementary schools. I met some turtles from mates at Cedar Creek. Friday, May 31st, was the eighth-grade awards ceremony at the middle school. The crowd was standing room only. Monday, June 3rd, we held our finance committee meeting, and then at 7:00 p.m., more than three-hundred thousand dollars in scholarships were awarded to one-hundred-and-forty-six senior students to help further their education. Thank you to each and every member of this community, all the clubs and organizations that make these scholarships possible for the Lacy High School students. Tuesday, June 4th, at 6:00 p.m., was the Mill Pond Awards Ceremony, and I'm sorry I was unable to attend. Wednesday, June 5th, was our curriculum committee meeting. And Friday, June 7th, it was a great morning for Senior Field Day at Gilly Park. Cedar Creek also hosted their Career Day. Then in the evening, it was Senior Prom Night at the Carriage House in Galloway. Three-hundred-and-fifty-nine students enjoyed a wonderful night. Thank you to all the staff and the chaperones that make this special event possible. Saturday, June 8th, was the Fishing Derby at the Rio Mill Pond. At noon, the Relay for Life was held Berkeley Veterans Park. Tuesday, June 11th, the Lenoka Harbor Fourth Grade Awards and then Forkett River School Awards, and then in the afternoon, for the first time, preschool graduations were held at Mill Pond. The little ones sang a song, "Kindergarten Here We Come." It was the cutest graduation ceremony I ever saw. Wednesday, June 12th, at 6:00 p.m., the eighth graders were off to the high school. Three-hundred-and-thirty-six students were promoted. Thursday, June 13th, under sunny and cloudy skies, we said goodbye to our class of 2019. The rain held off and this class was launched to pursue their futures. Good luck and Godspeed to the newest members of the military from Lacy High School. And I think I'm about done, Mr. Giordano.
Thank you, Ms. DeSensa. Mr. DeBlass?
Yes, yes. Congratulations to Mr. Peters and his induction. It's funny, I think I was first introduced to his family. Everybody knows somebody in this town somehow. I was a school teacher for like two or three years with his dear wife, Mrs. Peters, who was probably one of the nicest humans I've met, you know, just genuinely an amazing woman. So you basically only got my vote because I like your wife. But on a real note, man, congratulations, you're a great guy, really great guy. Math league, something I was always horrible in, so I admire everybody who does well in math. I definitely couldn't get up there with those kids and hang with them and the things that they do. Huge congratulations to forty thousand dollars for the recycling, is quite incredible. Just an awesome, awesome thing. It's funny, you know, a bunch of little things that we don't think matter, you know, always add up, like the plastic, one plastic bottle at a time. And back to Quinn, you know, I, you're going to be so successful, man. I don't know, I know you probably hear that often, but I just feel it, you know? I get to travel the world and meet new people all the time and some people truly have the it factor, and I believe you do. And I think success really starts with giving and serving others, you know? Doing our best to help other people. And it's amazing that you could, you know, you're, what you're doing here is truly, it can be life-changing for people, you know? And when you put other people before yourself and really do our best to help others, good is brought back to us, you know? And one thing you have to understand on your journey, no matter what you do, there's always going to be someone that is going to disagree with you or someone who doesn't see the bigger cause. Like me telling you I would give you five-hundred dollars, there's going to be people saying that I'm doing that for my own reasons, you know? To where you got, have to get to a point to where you really can't care what people think, man, you know? Push forward, keep doing what you're doing, you're going to be, you're going to, when I say rich, you know, I don't mean just monetary-wise, you know? Like the things you do for people, you're going to be able to rest your head every night and know that you're doing good for humanity, you know? So I can't say enough great things about that. And, you know, it's just good to see everybody here trying to be positive. I wish we saw more people running for the board. I don't know why certain people didn't run for the board when we had the opportunity to do so with the opening. But yeah, thank you to everybody and my fellow board members, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. DeBlass. Mr. Peters, first time up the plate.
Thank you. Well, first I'd like to thank the other candidates that ran for the position. It was a tough road to hoe. Witnessed a couple of good things tonight. The math awards, forty thousand dollars for plastic, that's just, that's just amazing. Quinn, doing a great thing. If you need help, I have a small construction company, I can lend you some tools, we'll go down there and help out and take some footage away, we'll get dirty. We'll get that done. I'm definitely on for that, helping out. That's about it. I wanted to say thank you very much.
Alright, thank you, Skip. When you sit in this spot, did I forget anybody? No, right? It's like you become completely redundant and everybody's already said it, so. But Mrs. Costa with the math students and the Ocean County Math League, I think it's great to see all those kids up here. That, you know, that, awards, graduations, diplomas, looking in the kids' eyes when they get, when they accomplish things, that's what makes this job or this volunteer work so gratifying. Yeah, forty thousand for plastic is quite amazing, so Ms. Renuska's team, great job. Quinn, I think Mr. DeBlass said it most eloquently. You're a special young man and very well-spoken up here. I think that's your dad next to you, so I kind of know where you get it from. But you should be very proud of yourself and your effort, and the Boy Scouts are such a wonderful organization, I think. Are you an Eagle Scout yet or no?
Not yet.
Not yet, but you will be, because I could see it, you're working at it. So just a great idea, thinking about others and putting others first, so congratulations there. Mr. Waters, I want to be part of those discussions when you have the hockey team discussions. You made some very valid points. The decisions that we make up here are sometimes not the most easiest to make, but some of the things that you said tonight resonated, so I want to be a part of that. And Mr. Scanlon, you know, it's, when kids do good things, it's always nice to recognize that, the fact that power was out and we made it through that without incident, I think it's something that says a positive thing about all our students and the graduates and very well behaved indeed. So congratulations to our graduates, both eighth grade and our high school graduates. We're proud of them and we're looking forward to what the eighth graders can do in high school and what the graduating seniors can do out in the real world. On a somber note, I'd like to offer condolences on behalf of the Lacy Township Board of Education to the family of Mr. William Moss. Mr. Moss passed away on Sunday, June 9th, and was seventy-seven years old. He was a dedicated member of our community. Whenever there was a cause, someone in need, or some way he could help an organization, William was there. He attended our board meetings frequently and often spoke at the podium. Mr. Moss served as a sergeant in the United States Air Force and was a Vietnam War-era veteran. All who were fortunate to know him knew how proud he was of our veterans, military men and women, and our country for which they served. He held our law enforcement officers in high regard and aided in the fundraising for the purchase of several body cameras for the Lacy Township Police Department. Once again, condolences to his family, he will be missed. Thank you. And with that, we will go on to new business resolutions. Item A, numbers one through seventy-five.
Motion?
Roll call? Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensa?
Yes, on all, but I have a nay list of bills, fifty-eight items, which I will furnish to you tomorrow. I have to abstain on 206-100 as it's related to my own expense. Nay on item 51 and nay on item 61.
You're going to give those, all that to me and write it?
I will furnish the list to you, yes.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes, no on 36 and 37.
Okay. Alright, we'll catch up. Mr. Blass?
Yes, and no on 36 and 37.
Mrs. Downing?
Okay, I'm going to abstain on item Bill, this is the list of bills. I'm going to abstain on 950-450, also 953-821, and also 524-950, all due to conflict. I'm also going to abstain on A39, and the rest would be yes.
Thank you. Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Okay, I do believe, yup, we're good, thank you.
Okay. B, donations?
Motion?
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensa?
Yes, and I have to abstain on my own donation for the high school.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mr. DeBlass?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Yes, and I have to abstain on my own donation for the high school.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mr. DeBlass?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes, and thank you. Item C, programs and curriculum?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensa?
Yes.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mr. DeBlass?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes. Item E, certificated personnel, numbers 1 through 22?
Motion.
Oh, I skipped D?
I think D, yeah.
Can we retract for a moment? I'm sorry. I skipped D. D, professional days and workshops. Second. Roll call, please.
Who was this? I know it's on you.
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensa?
Yes.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mr. DeBlass?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes. Now, we will move on to E, certificated personnel, certificated personnel 1 through 22.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Was that Mr. Riggs?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensa?
Yes.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mr. DeBlass?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
I'm going to abstain on one name, Nicole Medenski, even though she is not a relative of perception. So I'm going to abstain on that. That's number 24. All the rest are yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Giordano?
And before Mr. Giordano moves on to item F, I just wanted to take a moment and congratulate Mallory Krokowski, who joins our administrative team as a elementary K6 supervisor. She is replacing Mary Esch, who last, recently was appointed to the position of High School Guidance Counselor. We are looking forward to working with Ms. Krokowski. She was a huge asset to our child study team, and we know that she will do great things in the Department of Special Education, working with the Director of Special Services, Mr. Bond. So congratulations to Mallory.
Item F, non-certificated personnel, 1 through 10, second. Roll call, please.
Who was that?
Regina Furtsby, second.
Oh, you, okay, sorry. Thank you. Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensa?
Yes.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mr. DeBlass?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano? We have one walk-on motion this evening. It reads as follows. Resolution, non-renewing staff member number 857355 in rescinding any offer of reemployment. Reads as follows. Whereas staff member 857355, known as employee, has been employed by the board since March 18, 2019, and whereas the superintendent has provided written notice to the staff member that the staff member's employment for the 2019-2020 school year shall not be renewed, and whereas the staff member was inadvertently included in a resolution of renewal dated May 20, 2019, and whereas the board wishes to confirm superintendent's notice of non-renewal and to rescind the resolution of renewal as it pertains to the staff member, now therefore be resolved by the Lacey Township Board of Education that staff member 857355's employment is hereby non-renewed and any previously approved resolution of renewal is hereby rescinded and be it further resolved that employees' employment shall end on June 30, 2019.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Peters?
I have to abstain. I was not in private session.
Sure, pretty well. Mrs. DeSensa?
Yes.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mr. DeBlass?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
That is all I have, sir.
All right, thank you very much. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?